This clock on the clock, y'all ready?
Ready.
Ready. Staff, ready? All right, I'm going to call to order the June 11th, 2024 City Council meeting. We are going to start with an invocation and pledge led by Councilmember Place Three, Kent McKinnon.
Good day. Heavenly Father, thank you for our many blessings, including the rain, and for the opportunity to get together this evening and work toward improving our community. Bless us and guide us, the council, the city staff, especially emergency responders and military that are around the world to protect us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stuart, do you have any announcements of community interests?
I have a couple of quick ones. I do want to point out, everybody, we encourage you to check the library schedule because the library is in full summer mode right now, and that means there's something to do every day. And so, I don't know if you can make it out up there, today is the 11th, so between now and our next meeting on the 25th, I'm just going to go through a couple of things for adults. There are several book clubs, craft meetings, a yoga class, and then next Saturday, June 22nd, Clifton Piper will be presenting A History of Hill Country Baseball. So, that sounds really interesting, and I encourage everybody to check those out and check that schedule out further and see if there's something that might appeal to you. For kids, we have Storytime, Adventure Times, Lego Club, and two shows coming up at the Calo Theater, including a Raptor show tomorrow. There's a photo of that from the top. That's a lot of fun every year, those birds sometimes will fly around the Calo, so bring your kids, your grandkids by, it's a lot of fun to watch. That starts at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. All right, for parks, we've got a big skateboard competition coming up, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, June 22nd. It goes, 9:30 a.m. is check-in, and that goes from 10:00 a.m. until all the contestants get through. And I believe there's a band going to be there this year, you can see all the different sponsors, but that's a great competition every year. Get some really good skaters out there, and it's a lot of fun to watch, so encourage everybody to come out and see that as well. Again, that's not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And I have one more slide up here, I don't know much about it, but I think somebody on council does, so we're going to let her speak to this young lady who appeared in the paper today.
Oh, my goodness. It's my granddaughter, Gentry Honeycutt. And she comes with me a lot to the Curville Pet's Alive Safe House. She's got a, just a deep care for animals, and she spent her own money that she got from, I don't know what she does besides help me, but she comes out to swamp mead every month, and she helps me clean that facility after the swamp mead, and she earns money that way. And she used her money to buy 80 cans of kitten food because we've got a kitten problem, explosion going on right now. So, she did that and brought that up last week, and I'm really proud of her.
Yeah, good for her.
Thank you.
I wish she was here so we could give-
I know. I'm shocked.
Well, doesn't fall far from the tree.
Thank you, Delane.
Any other announcements?
Thank you.
All right, we're going to start with a proclamation on the Great Outdoors Month in Curville, and anybody from the Parks staff going to be here? Come on up.
Proclamation for the City of Curville. Whereas the City of Curville is blessed with outstanding outdoor recreation and leisure opportunities for our citizens and visitors to enjoy while participating in safe and healthy fun with their family and friends. And whereas outdoor activity promotes a healthy body, mind, and spirit, and is touted by health organizations and medical professionals as a remedy to the adverse effects caused by lack of physical activity and too much screen time, whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activity by providing spaces such as sports fields, hike bike trails, lakes and rivers, swimming pools, and many other outdoor areas designed to promote active lifestyles, encouraging citizens and visitors to get outdoors, be active, play. And whereas the President of the United States has designated June as National Great Outdoors Month, the City of Curville, Texas, County of Per, recognizes the benefits derived from the city's generous inventory of outdoor parks, activities, and resources. And it's been signed by me. Who wants to hold this for a picture? You can, you're right by me. And here's what we'll do, after the pictures, I would like each of you to say your name and how you're related, what your role is with the park system, okay?
Let me go over there by him.
Smile. Mayor, who's here tonight, you used to make this look so easy from back there. Please, your name and what you're, how you're associated with the park system.
Jack Vaughn Van Uten, I'm an office clerk.
How long have you been with it?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Tina North, I'm the office manager for the Parks Department.
And how long have you been with it?
Fifteen.
Oh, my goodness.
Ethan Mitchell, Parks Maintenance Facilities Manager, seven months.
Lisa Naisaladon, current Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, serving my 19th year.
Congratulations.
Rosalina Desma, I'm the interim Assistant Director, and this will be, next month will be eight years for me.
Congratulations.
David Bartles, I'm on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I believe this is my third year.
Congratulations.
Ashley Boyle, Director of Parks and Recreation, I've been with the city for 16 years.
16 years. Let's give them a round of applause. I want to tell you, even people my age enjoy the parks. My wife and I were out on the River Trail this morning, and it was, we were not the only ones who were on the park, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is quite an honor for our City Secretary's Office. So, everybody with that off, Kim's going to read first, and then everybody can come up, or come up while Kim's reading.
Yes, I'd like to invite City Secretary Shelley McElhanan and Deputy City Secretary Keisha Francino to come up. The Texas Municipal Clerk Association Achievement of Excellence Award was designed to recognize excellence in the effective and efficient management of resources in a municipal clerk's office. The Texas Municipal Clerk's Achievement of Excellence is open to all offices of Texas Municipal, Texas Registered Municipal Clerks and the municipalities they represent. The Achievement of Excellence covers a period of two years, and chosen Texas Registered Municipal Clerks may use the Office of Excellence insignia for those two years. The City Secretary's Office must maintain the criteria in nine of 12 standards demonstrating achievement in each standard. The City of Curville City Secretary's Office met criteria for all 12 standards. This is the first time that the City of Curville City Secretary Office has achieved this award, and we would like to congratulate them.
Congratulations. Now, Shelley, this award doesn't go out to everybody. How many, how many across the state, how many?
You have to be nominated and turn in your-
Oh, not many. It's rare.
It's very high on it.
And Keisha, did you do all the work to get this?
I did it all together, but Shelley and I-
These ladies are wonderful, let's give them a round of applause.
And if you notice, they're wearing their uniform today.
Good.
This is Shelley's husband, Tommy.
Proud husband.
Proud husband, yes.
Let's look over it, ask it one more time. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
They didn't indicate it, but that's really a big deal, really big deal, and I'm very proud of their hard work. Shelley, do we have any visitor, citizen speakers?
Yes, sir, we have two. Mr. Rock.
Before we start, I want everyone to understand that the visitors forum is for citizens with business not scheduled on our agenda. That means, I'd really prefer you to talk about business with the city. I'm not going to curtail your freedom of speech, but if you get out of line, I'm going to ask you to leave. So, next, Mr.?
Mr. Rock.
He still here? Okay, who's next?
Daniel Lowry.
Daniel. You spoke to us last time, if I remember correctly. Can you say your name and address for the record?
Daniel Lowry, I live at 512 Elm Street. I'm a resident of Curville for 60 years, and I'm here on the same topic I was last time. 515 Elm Street is a home school that is now branched out into a daycare with nine or 10 kids.
It's okay. Mr. Lowry, did you talk with staff last time? Did city staff talk with you about this at all?
I did.
Okay, proceed.
One of the things I wanted to point out is a learning pod, and this is the definition of a learning pod. It means a group of children who, based on the voluntary association of the children's parents, meet together at various times and places to participate in or enhance the children's primary or secondary academic studies, including participation in activity or service provided to the children in exchange for payment. That's pretty much what I got to say, and I'll be back next meeting.
Oh, we'll be here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
I don't see the first one yet, so I guess we'll move on. The consent agenda is next, items on the consent agenda are considered routine and can be approved with one motion unless a council member asks for a separate consideration of any item. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any council member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove 4C.
4C.
Just for discussion.
Gotcha. Any other items? Is there a motion then on the remaining items?
I'll make a motion to pass 4A, B, D, and E.
Second.
There is a resolution in that consent agenda, do we need that to be read into the record?
No.
My motion is second, any discussion of those items? All in favor? So, vote. Opposed? Passed unanimously. And now, 4C.
This is regarding the $50,000 cost for the Fourth of July, the Fourth on the River, which is always a free event to citizens of Curville. There is an increase this year, and I just simply asked the city manager, and Ashley Boyle as well, to explain that the increase, or maybe have a breakdown of all the expenses that gets us to the $50,000. And I'm sure it's not cheap to, you know, to put people in place for the services that are needed, but I just want to know what they are.
Ms. Boyle?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council, just want to check to see if there's any representatives from Arcadia Live in here. They're supposed to be present tonight to speak to this in case it got pulled off the agenda, but I will do my best to answer the questions. So, based off of the increase, they did ask for and receive an increase last year, the $50,000 allocation was budgeted and approved for this year. And basically, the impetus of that increase is based on the logistics. So, we, this agreement and this funding is a reimbursement based off of the logistics of the event, so the stage, the port of bodies, the fencing, and they have expanded their event, and they expanded the fencing and other items that they are offering for this event, which results in an increase. But we can certainly ask them for a breakdown, and we're happy to provide that to you, but I do not have that with me this evening.
I just, I know it was said in the actual 4C that the packet, that we would get it eventually, and we're approving it tonight, and I will approve it, but I still want to know that, kind of where the money is going when you're asking for it, what is, how'd you get to that number? And I'm sure there's going to be answers, so I'll look forward to it.
Sure, we're happy to send that to you.
Excuse me, there were also things the city was providing that we are no longer providing, has that increased the cost?
No, that has, that is not increasing the cost.
Okay, I had heard that from another source. Okay, Kent.
Yeah, so it was, this is all being reimbursed, so they pay and then they give us the-
Correct, that's based off of a post-event report, we have to make sure it's compliant with the law and the way the funding works, and we evaluate that in Julie's office as well, and then it's provided based on a reimbursement basis.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, they, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brenda.
No, go ahead.
My question is kind of more so, I guess, to Julie, not Julie, Julie, but Julie at the Convention Investors Bureau. Is there a way that we can see a breakdown after the event of hotels, occupancy, income, hot tax, things like that from the event, just to show a little bit more that we're getting back as a city as well?
Yes, sir, that actually, the post-event report was attached, and it was supposed to be attached to the agenda, but somehow it got removed in Granicus, and so I'm happy to also send you that post-event report, we do have that information.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say that I believe this event costs in upwards of maybe $100,000 to put on, and that at least half of that is done through sponsorships, businesses that sponsor, you know, whether it's the artist or, you know, something, the fireworks and that sort of thing. So, I know that, you know, along with everything else that has gone up, just the, just the, you know, the industry itself, you're looking at increased costs across the board for any kind of entertainment.
It's just my curiosity. I'm just curious what those things are. I'll make a motion to approve item number 4C.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passed unanimously, thank you. We have an item on the regular agenda, number 6C, request for variance from distance requirement applicable to the sale of alcoholic beverages. The applicant has asked to table that, so we will not be discussing that tonight. If you're here to speak to 6C, it will not be on the, we're not going to talk about it tonight because the applicant has withdrawn for tonight. Let's go to 5A. Ms. McElhanan, will you please read that in?
Resolution number 23-2024, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize an automobile service and repair shop minor on the property located at 209 Sydney Baker South, Highway 16, the property located within a light commercial zoning district C2, and making the permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton has an able assistant.
Good evening, my name is Anello Hills Zanoni, and I'm a management intern, and I have a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize an automotive service and repair shop, and to make the permit subject to certain restrictions and conditions. So, the zoning district allows the use, however, the zoning code, it requires supplementary requirements for that particular use. And since they are within 500 feet from the floodplain, they need a conditional use permit. And the site plan was one of the conditions that were required for approval, and they have given us that.
Mr. Zanoni?
Sir.
Will you tell everybody where you're going to school?
Shriners University, I'm a senior this year.
He's an intern here this summer, that's good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Zanoni? I have a question. A conditional use permit, did that go through the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
And how is the vote there? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zanoni or Mr. Paxton? If not, I'll-
So, have there been some other variances made in this area?
I don't think we've had any in this immediate area, but we've had, we have given variances in the past adjacent to the floodplain, and the conditions in the resolution are to help prevent, if there is any automotive, you know, oil or fluid spills, they'll have a spill plan on site, and all of the business will be conducted inside of the building.
Any other questions of Mr. Paxton? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Um, sir?
We have a public hearing, you're right.
Yes, sir.
She keeps me on her toes, that's why she won that big award. I'm going to open a public hearing at 6:20. Anyone can speak on this item. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:20. Thank you, ma'am, for reminding me. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 23-2024 with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Opposed? Unanimous. Item 6A, Chief Maloney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, proud to stand before you tonight and present the Kirk County Interlocal Agreement for Firefighting and Emergency Medical Services. The current Kirk County Interlocal Agreement expires on September 30th of 2024, and we just received notification from the Kirk County Attorney that they have, the court has signed the current interlocal agreement. We have also agreed to continue the same service that we provided for the last 10 years and continue that for the next 10 years. And that is what I present for you, and be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Maloney?
I do.
Go ahead.
Is there any increase in revenue for the city?
So, there is, so we do have an escalator in the interlocal agreement per annual, and then we continue that forward, and there's a little bit of a formula, I know Julie's here too, that we work through that, that will continue for the next 10 years, and it will increase every year.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, we're starting where we're at right now, though, correct?
Yes, sir.
And building, building up from there?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not going back to-
Correct. Yes, sir. So, so, no, just continue moving forward. So, it's not renewing the interlocal agreement, so, because it is a new one, but we're excited to be able to present that.
Chief Maloney, or Mr. Rice, is that mechanism for increasing the escalator, is that the CPI, what is that?
The CPI Dallas Fed something, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Maloney? Right, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and finalize the interlocal agreement.
We have a second.
Second.
Mr. McKinnon, second, he said it slightly earlier. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you all, and we're honored to continue the service for the city and the county.
Thank you for the great job you do.
And it's a 30-year anniversary, so we get to continue another 10.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Remember, there were several others in the room, remember that 30, that 30-year? All right, 6B, authorization to submit a funding application to the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for the development of Granger McDonald Park in an amount not to exceed $2.2 million. Mr. Hornus.
And Mayor, we do have five citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you for letting me know.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hornus.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for taking the time tonight. I just have, we've talked about this one quite a bit for the two council members who are new here, just kind of an overview, the landing development has a one-acre park attached to it named Granger McDonald Park, it was donated to the city as a part of the $20 million bond package that was considered between EIC and the city council. This was one of five projects that were considered for funding, and so, we have done a few of these iterations so far that have brought, have been brought to y'all to then start that four-part process, so there is a ask to y'all to ask EIC, EIC would then consider calling a public hearing, have the public hearing, and provided it gets approved, come back for you all for ratification, so kind of that four-step process, yes. So, what you have in your packets tonight is kind of the first step in that process, which is the engineering attached with doing the design work for that. John Hewitt is our engineer on this project, he's here this evening. John has helped us with River Trail, he's done a lot of work along the water's edge, which is one of the primary reasons, in addition to his good work, but he's already kind of spun up on a lot of the environmental components when you're, when you're doing this work along the river. Texas Parks and Wildlife has added some endangered species to the, to the list, and one of them is called a fat muckit, which is a fun word to say, and there's one that's called a pimpleback as well, which I don't know why you would call something that, but I, you know, it'd be fun to be around when things get named. So, in any event, what we have done, what the request is tonight is similar to what we did with the pool. We had the scope of services for the architect attached to the pool, but to release the full tranche of funds, so that way we wouldn't have to go through that four-part process again. What staff is asking tonight is to approach EIC with the full $2.2 million request, and with that, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Any question for Mr. Hornus? Any questions for the engineer who's here? All right. We have citizen speakers, who's first?
Yes, sir, John Anderson.
Mr. Anderson. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Anderson, I live at 2729 Indian Wells Drive, and I'm here tonight as speaking to support the approval to seek the funding from EIC, or request that they look at it. I'm speaking as chairman of the Upper Guadalupe River Foundation. We have a great interest in this, as you know, we have a memorandum of understanding with the city to essentially collaborate, partner in terms of the development of the park. We, we have that interest because the, the next part of our river center development relies on having that park developed, we've been very open about that, and so that's, that's what we're in support of, and ask for your approval of it. I, I would like to take the opportunity to express to you, all of you, and to the city staff, apologies for any confusion we may have created over the last six days. We have, I think as many of you know, we started a very intense campaign to raise funds for the acquisition of the lot that we need to build the building on, and we have a target required date of about September 1st to, to raise that money. And we were, we were quite confident in doing that until several weeks ago, where we had, we were informed that a very significant commitment that we had of a million and a half dollars was being withdrawn. I need to emphasize the withdrawal, it was emphasized, it has nothing to do with the project, the quality of it, desirability, it was related to other things other than the project. Nonetheless, it left us scrambling, as you might appreciate, which is why we have started this recent campaign, and again, I apologize for any confusion and any consternation that we may have called. This is one of those things, if we could, if I could turn back the film and run it again, I'd probably do a couple of things differently. I didn't, I take responsibility, I apologize. I do want to say with the campaign that started six days ago, we have already raised over 50% of the funds we need for the completion of the, to, to close on purchasing the land, and thank you.
Next speaker.
Celeste Hammond.
Ms. Hammond.
Hi, Celeste Hammond, I live here in Curville, and I'm also on the UGRC board, and I am the Programs and Activities Chair, and I am so excited about McDonald Park and what we're going to be able to do there. We, we've already started doing a lot of program ideas, so we're going to be looking at summer day camps for kids, particularly, we'll be looking at how to have enough grant money coming in and enough donation money coming in, that we'll be giving scholarships for any kid in Curville that wants to come to a summer camp, and that's, that is a primary goal. We'll be focusing a lot on sailing, because sailing is something that's very unique to this area, you can't, you have to go quite a long ways to go- You can't, you have to go quite a long ways to go sail someplace. So we'll be doing sailing camps for kids, but also sailing camps for families. And I spoke to one of our donors this morning that sent us in, what, nobody knew where this donor came from, I'll just say it that way. And she picked up a flyer and she sent us the money. And so I called her to see what she was most interested in. And she is so excited for her grandchildren to come and play at that park, she lives in Saddlewood. And she wants to take them to sailing lessons. And I said, well, why don't you join them? And she goes, "I think I will." And so I think that there is going to be a lot of enthusiasm for that kind of programming, but we're going to be doing lots of other kinds of things, from fitness classes and yoga classes and sup yoga. And you heard in the resolution, resolution at the park kind of looks at the mind-body-spirit. And so mind, we have education programs, a lot of different kinds of certifications. We'll have vocational certifications also for some of the kids, we'll have STEM certification that's going on. The body, of course, is all of the different kinds of activities that we have, from the fitness classes to the sailing, to stand-up paddleboards, to kayaking. One of the, I, I love to be creative about programming, that's my background, I have a background in wellness, so mind-body-spirit. And one of the things that I've been thinking about, do you know what a dragon boat is from Hawaii Five-O? You know? So I thought, how fun it would be to have a, a dragon boat fitness adventure class. And so I'm playing with that idea and what we're going to be able to do with that. And then in the spirit area, we're going to be offering the yoga classes, of course, but also some meditation circles. And I also had the idea of how fun it would be for us to get a group of people out in kayaks and go sit in the middle of the lake and do a meditation in the middle of the lake all tied together in kayaks. And so I've been thinking about the things that would really be interesting to me and also the things that would be interesting to the citizens of Kerrville that would be different, a little bit different than what's been offered at some other places. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Lewis.
Mr. Lewis. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Hi, Peter Lewis, I live at 240 Galworth, I'm a 30-plus year resident of Kerrville and I am a member of the GRC, UGRC Board. I want to be clear, I do not have a financial investment in this project, but I do have an emotional and a spiritual and a, just, I, I think this is something that the city has been looking for, for a long time, the ability for every citizen, any citizen to have access to the river and recreational opportunities. This is, this project has many moving parts, this is one of the very first pieces in it. We've got a great engineer, a great designer. One of my roles on the board is to provide some guidance from my experience as an architect. I've been working with our, the architect that did some of the initial design for this and I'm be happy to collaborate with Mr. Hewitt, but I just want to encourage you to go ahead and approve this first tranche of funds. And I think, let's see where it goes. I think it's a great deal for, it's a great deal for Kerrville's future, it's a long, long time coming. Thank you.
Lisa Nye Saladin.
Ms. Nye Saladin, please state your name and address for the record.
Lisa Nye Saladin, I live at 1015 Morningside Drive in Kerrville. And I'm the current chair of the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And I know that there's a lot of positive about this park and I get it, but being on the Parks Board, the whole thing about this is backwards, in my opinion. The city and the EIC Board approved the funding, the funding for a design idea for a public park that is tied to a conceptual plan for a private building that would act as a community building for a public park. But the land for the private building is not yet owned and a fundraising campaign is in place. After which I would think there would be another fundraising campaign to build the building that would be the place where the programming for the public park would happen. And hopefully by then, there would be a business plan available that would show how all the promised programming would be funded. But yet this city is considering going ahead with funding an engineering plan for a public park that has around 90 parking spaces and $785,000 worth of landscaping. If the fundraising for the land and/or the building doesn't come to fruition, then we end up with a lot of very expensive parking at a 1.5 acre park. There are so many unanswered questions that have been there since the Granger McDonald Park first proposed that it be included into the EIC bond. And so many of these questions still don't have answers, including whether land and a building next to this public park will or won't come to be. I understand the desire to utilize Nimitz Lake, but does the reality of what the resource actually is match up with the vision that is being presented? And is the fundraising headed to success? And does the current design idea of the public park without an adjacent community center make sense?
Now, last speaker.
Judy Eichner.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Looks so familiar. We'll do that. Judy Eichner, 604 Cardinal here in Kerrville. You guys know that I have been in support of this all along and I've just came to tell, tell you that I'm still in support of it. The committee may have hit a little bit of a hiccup recently, but I don't think there's any question that this committee is not going to fulfill what they have promised us. And it will happen. I, my husband and I have chosen to move our original pledge to this campaign because I do believe in it. And I'm just here to encourage you to send this money, approve this money, send it on to EIC for their approval. This park is going to make a world of difference in our community. And it's going to be both good for the city, for the citizens, and I just encourage you to say yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen's speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Hornus. Remind us, this is the first step of four. We are making an ask of the EIC. The EIC will then determine if they want to have a public hearing. If they have a public hearing and that they decide to pass it, it'll come back to us for approval, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
This is the very first step of four.
It is, yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Hornus? Or any staff member?
Well, after meeting with Mr. Rice about this, all of the items, but this was one of them, it seems to me that what we're on the hook for, for sure, is the $219,800. Yes, the 2.2 million is something they're going to need, but I think endorsing that amount helps the ask for the rest of it, for the, for the buying of the land. And I, I do agree with Judy, I, I think this will be an asset for our community. And it's never, it's always painful, a little bit, it's always, it's not easy. But that's what I got from Mr. Rice when we spoke, is that the worst that can happen is if, you know, if it doesn't come to fruition at the time that they want it or at the way they want it, we're, those engineering plans will not dissolve. If we've got that in place, we can use that for a future plan of some type if it has to change. So that's what satisfied me, is that it won't be a waste of money as we go down the road to secure the rest of it and to secure the land. Because that's what I wanted to make sure, is if this doesn't come to fruition, will we lose that we've invested? And the answer was no, is that correct? That's all I have to say.
Any other questions or comments?
I would say, I think it's a really valuable project. And there's a couple loose ends, but some time to get those, you know, picked up in the meantime. But that lake is a fabulous asset to the community and access is for the nonexistent and so I think we want to all work together the best we can to make sure that, that it does come to fruition because it's, it's just really a super plan, I think.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Oh, I just think that your, your targeted amounts, fundraising amounts that are smaller will ensure, will ensure better success for you. Because I know in the beginning, your campaign was like $10 million and now we're doing it in little chunks and I think you have a better chance of being successful going that route.
Mr. Harris, did you have anything to say?
Last, can we have rowing? I'll ask that for another gentleman that's on council with this.
Not me.
So, really what we decide is an advocate. Are you a rower? So we need an advocate.
We have to record this, if you're speaking away from the microphone, we can.
I'm sorry. So, so it certainly is under consideration. What you need for a rowing center is to have an advocate for that in order to help to raise the funds for that. It's, it's a more expensive kind of programming and so it's not ruled out. And it is not currently on the boards for it. But if we're, if there's anyone out here that knows of someone that really, really wants to pursue a rowing program there, then come talk to me because I, I want to hear from them.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask my resident expert that I'm ill of, is it long enough to have?
How long enough to have a typical 2,000 meter race?
Okay.
And so certainly long enough for somebody, if they have their own equipment, they could use that and they could bring it and single skulls or even doubles would fit, you know, and they could get good exercise and, and there's, there's, there's room for that. But really to have, you know, normal sanctioned races, not so much, but, but it's very adequate for, for training and for somebody to enjoy the sport if they, if they want to. And it might be with their own equipment.
And with their own equipment, yeah, I think that that's a strong possibility. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize to submit a funding application to the EIC for 2.2 million, which includes the cost of the engineering. If approved, it will be presented at the June EIC meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in a second, any discussion? Hearing all, all in favor? So vote? Oppose? Passes unanimously. 6C was tabled per request of the applicant. I think they're going to bring it back. All right, Ms. Dozier, are you presenting for us?
Yes, I am.
Item 7A, oppose creation of a public facility corporation for the Kerrville Public Utility, presented tonight by Amy Dozier, who is the CFO of K-Pub. Ms. Dozier.
And we do have one citizen speaker sign up.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll do that after the presentation.
After, okay. Very good. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Amy Dozier, I am the Director of Finance at Kerrville Public Utility Board and I'm here to discuss some very important decisions facing K-Pub in the near future. First, I want to start with a quick reminder regarding how well the city and K-Pub's goals align. Kerrville 2050 calls for efficient and cost-effective public services and K-Pub's mission calls for efficient, reliable service at the lowest responsible price. As you can see from this chart that compares K-Pub's residential rates to others in our area, we're doing an excellent job with this goal. In fact, our residential rate for 1,000 kilowatt hours of monthly power is $102.50, which is the lowest of any utility in our area, almost 40% lower than the US average and about 30% lower than the Texas average. However, unfortunately, we do not have the option to just keep doing what we're doing and keep our rate at $102.50, that's not an option. So let me explain why. K-Pub does not currently own any power generation. Instead, we purchase power from a diverse group of power suppliers through something called power purchase agreements. The chart here shows six different power supply agreements that we currently have in place. You can see that we buy from a wide variety of suppliers. Our energy comes from multiple sources and many locations around the state. Natural gas, solar and wind are our primary sources. You can also see from this chart that the agreements are staggered so that they end at different times. And this portfolio is the primary reason why K-Pub's rates are comparatively low. We have favorable terms with our current agreements and some of our agreements, such as our solar agreements, are especially favorable. These agreements predate my time at K-Pub, but I've heard Mike Whitler say that we were lucky with the timing of some of our agreements, especially the solar agreements. However, my assessment is that K-Pub's luck is the perfect example of the adage, luck is what happens when preparation meets opportunity. And so that leads us to where we are today. You can see that the green bar at the top of the chart is, ends in 2026. That green bar represents our contract with CPS Energy. CPS Energy is the municipally-owned electric utility for the city of San Antonio. CPS has been a great partner for K-Pub and they currently supply about 65% of the energy used by our K-Pub customers. This is an especially important power supply agreement for K-Pub because it's something called a load following agreement. As you can imagine, there's a significant difference in the energy required at 6:00 AM on a cold February morning compared to noon on a lovely day at the end of October. And with this load following agreement, CPS agrees to supply the peaks and the valleys of our load, whatever they may be. It's not limited to a specific amount of power. So these types of agreements are becoming more and more expensive. They are also becoming much shorter in duration and that's basically due to changes that are occurring in the marketplace. Those changes include several things. Number one, load growth. So ERCOT is predicting that peak demand in 2030 will be 80% higher than what our record was last summer, so almost double what our record, all-time record high was last summer. This load growth is driven by population growth, manufacturing growth, data centers, AI, crypto. And even though K-Pub's growth is not that extreme, we are part of the ERCOT market. So that overall demand in the ERCOT market when it changes prices and the ERCOT market also changes prices for K-Pub. In addition, I recently attended a presentation that CPS gave and the representative was telling us that essentially they are adding a K-Pub-sized system to their utility every year, just in terms of customer growth within their service territory. So CPS currently has excess generation to sell to us, but will this always be the case? And if it's not, what does that mean for K-Pub? Another factor that's changing in the market is increased volatility. So in terms of weather events, we're obviously seeing a lot of volatility there, but also in terms of pricing in the ERCOT market, how pricing reacts to actual anticipated or perceived events, we're just seeing increasing volatility there. And finally, changes to rules in the ERCOT market are changing. So in the wake of winter storm Yuri, there have been rule changes enacted with the intent to help stabilize the grid. And these changes have come with more requirements to secure things such as reserve capacity and something ERCOT calls ancillary services. All of those come at higher costs. And that brings us to our next slide. So like I said, our CPS agreement ends in 2026 and now is the time to make a decision about how we replace that energy. I'm guessing that all of you have had to make a rent versus own decision at some point in your life and that is essentially where K-Pub is today. There's pros and cons of each decision and I'm going to let you read those, I'm not going to go through them one by one. But it's important to note that the changes in the market that I just discussed really make this a different calculation than it has previously been for K-Pub. And in addition to those market changes, another change that we have on our hands is the Texas Energy Fund. So the Texas Energy Fund is a $5 billion fund that offers low-interest funding for certain types of power generation projects. This fund is new. The voters approved the fund through a constitutional amendment in November of 2023. Rules for the fund were not announced until the end of March, so just a couple of months ago. And in order, the rules require that in order to be eligible to apply to this fund, you have to first file a non-binding notice of intent by May 31st. And from there, an application would be due by July 27th. So K-Pub has submitted this non-binding notice of intent. As the name implies, it does not obligate us to anything. We can choose to apply or not apply to the Texas Energy Fund. However, not submitting that notice of intent would have taken that Texas Energy Fund option However, not submitting that notice of intent would have taken that Texas Energy Fund option off the table. At this point, as we continue to work through this exhaustive lease versus buy type decision, we feel it's important to leave all possible options open and available to us. And so that brings me to why I'm here tonight. If K Pub determines that moving forward with an ownership option is the best way to continue providing reliable power at the lowest responsible price, there's a legal structure called a public facility corporation that would provide advantages. I'm not gonna get into the nitty-gritty legal details, but basically, a public facilities corporation is created by a sponsoring governmental entity such as the city of Curville. And that corporation can own public facilities. It can issue debt that's approved by the sponsoring entity. And this structure contains, offers certain legal advantages related to how debt is issued and secured and how the procurement process works for large projects. Creation of a public facility corporation requires approval via a resolution from city council. And the city of Curville actually already has a public facility corporation in place. So the Curville Public Facility Corporation was approved in 2022. That corporation is currently inactive, but it was established to be used for housing-related projects. So K Pub is asking for the same type of structure, but for the K Pub Public Facility Corporation rolls right off the tongue. And at your next meeting on June 25th, we'll be coming back to you asking for an action on that. Similar to that notice of intent filing with the Texas Energy Fund, this step allows us to keep all options on the table as we work through this decision process. It's also very similar in nature to what the city set up in 2022 in that this public facility corporation was set up, but it in no way obligated the city to anything. So K Pub, you know, by setting up the K Pub Public Facility Corporation, K Pub would not be obligated to pursue generation ownership, not obligated to apply to the Texas Energy Fund, issue debt, any of those things. But instead, it provides a ready-to-go advantageous legal structure when the right opportunity is there. So last slide, next steps. You can see that we've completed several things already. So we've had an executive session briefing with city council. We've filed our non-binding notice of intent. And then tonight, we're doing this informational presentation. The next step is June 18th. The K Pub board will consider a resolution requesting that the city of Curville create the K Pub Public Facility Corporation. And then June 25th, we'll be back here asking city council to consider a resolution to establish this corporation. So in closing, I want to say that the Curville City Council has done an excellent job of appointing the K Pub Board of Directors. These people are intelligent, and they're dedicated leaders. And working alongside them as K Pub management, we're proactively pursuing our mission to provide reliable power at the lowest responsible price. To date, that's met purchasing power through power purchase agreements. However, for the reasons we've discussed, the market is changing, and therefore, we're obligated to reevaluate what the best decision is going forward. I can't tell you what our detailed final recommendation is gonna be because we're currently in the early stages of a long process. However, I can definitively tell you that the K Pub board and K Pub management does not believe that this is the time to take options away or take options off the table, quite the contrary. Therefore, we're asking you to consider establishing this public facility corporation so that our options will remain open as we work through this important decision. This is only a preliminary step with no obligations, and big decisions are further down the road. So there's no decision to make tonight. This is just informational. But I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Any questions for Ms. Dozier?
You did a great job explaining that.
Oh, wait, wait, we have a citizen speaker. I forgot. Let's have a citizen speaker.
Yes, sir. George Burdi.
Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So my just questions. The presentation is great, but if I'm understanding it correct, is this just a way for K Pub to essentially keep its option open to issue debt? Is this a debt instrument? Is that, the K Pub's use, is that what the PFC would be used for?
So let me flip back here. So a couple of things. This is, let's see, this is a structure that provides us with more options regarding public financing. It doesn't, public financing does not have to be done through a public facility corporation, but it does offer some advantages. And then also, there are some procurement laws that are a little bit different when you're using this public finance corporation as opposed to another type of governmental entity. So it just gives us more options and potentially some advantages in how things are structured.
Ownership option, correct? I mean, that's really what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
K Pub's looking for a way to potentially find.
The purpose is to own a public facility.
Okay, all right. And with the housing thing, the city set up, there was a negative impact that got glossed over as far as the facility, I mean, it was a housing facility that was gonna essentially be tax exempt. K Pub's already tax exempt with their own, if they own facilities, right? Or no?
K Pub is tax exempt, yes.
Yeah, so that's not a negative impact. So I guess what I'm saying is, my guess is, council is not particularly well-versed in what this structure really does. And it would be helpful, I think, for staff maybe to present what the potential, what someone might say is a problem with this. We see the benefits, and they're obvious. But maybe somebody ought to have a little discussion about what the potential negatives are to the city. And there may be none, but it seems like nothing comes without a cost. So maybe there, you know, go with that. But the, I appreciate the fact that it came and presented ahead of the actual ask, but it would be nice if there was sort of a dialogue so that we understand what we're talking about, because it's somewhat of a mysterious thing. The law just changed about PFCs due to some of the problems that were showing up. The law just changed, I guess, this last legislature. So it'd be nice to know how that impacts anything that's being discussed here.
We're gonna ask questions. That'll be the start of the dialogue. Any questions for Ms. Dozier? I have a question. If, in fact, the PFC does issue debt, does that in any way affect the city's ability to issue debt?
No, it does not. They are completely separate entities. You know, if there was something completely catastrophic that happened, you know, maybe. But we've talked to financial advisors on the city's side, on K Pub's side, and there's no impact to the city's ability to issue debt. There's no impact to the city's credit rating, anything like that. This is completely separate and apart, just like if K Pub issues debt. And that's completely different than the city issuing debt.
This is a big, this is a big subject. Any other questions for Ms. Dozier?
And certainly, as we go along in this process, we will bring in additional experts and advisors and answer detailed questions. And this is the first step in a, you know, very early stage of what's a long process. And this does not in any way create an obligation, just as, you know, the public facility corporation that was set up in 2022 did not create a debt obligation for the city automatically or anything like that. This is a first step. So just want to make sure everyone's clear on that.
Do I understand that you're gonna try to have some town halls or a power talk or some, something in the future for citizens to come? And because just like we had our questions, they're very, you know, general about, you know, distance and rate increases and things like that. I think it would be good to have that type of discussion. And we were planning it. I think y'all were planning something, so.
Yeah, certainly. There, you know, there's kind of some fine lines here. So we are operating in the competitive ERCOT market. And because of that, at this stage in the process, we need to keep details of projects confidential. We're competing against other Texas Energy Fund applicants, competing for materials, resources, all that kind of stuff. So before these competitive details, you know, can be discussed, we need to be further along in the process. You know, once again, we're at the very beginning. We're not, we haven't applied to the Texas Energy Fund. We haven't set up this corporation yet. We're in the very initial stages. So certainly, if this was something that, you know, all of the boxes get checked and all of the due diligence is done and we're comfortable moving forward, then absolutely the public will be brought in and involved. And we are actively thinking and getting ideas for, you know, what, how we could do that.
Helpful, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Dozier? I think our next step, you, K Pub will return to the city council on June 25th?
Correct.
To consider a resolution to establish the K Pub Public Facility Corporation?
Yes, that is correct. So no action tonight. This was just informational.
And I also see in your presentation, there's a series of deadlines.
So June 18th is actually the next one on the list, and that's the K Pub board meeting. So before we bring y'all something, we're gonna have our board pass a resolution requesting that the city set up this public facilities corporation. Then the next step would be requesting that city council pass a resolution. And then beyond that, there's a Texas Energy Fund deadline at the end of July, and, you know, lots of steps beyond. But focusing on what immediately has to happen, those are the next few dates.
Everybody understand what's coming along? Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, eight A. This was complicated in that the chairperson of the Main Street Advisory Board was suddenly elevated to city council. And so we have a member who has not been participating in the meetings, is not responsive to inquiries, phone calls, or emails. So we will remove that member and appoint a replacement. Are we also appointing a replacement for your seat?
We're removing, we're replacing two openings. I'll explain it, but Brenda had something she wanted to say first.
Oh, well, no, I was, we were, you know, Joe, you and, Mayor, you and I were not the original liaisons for this board. And we were put there because, you know, the election was going on, and they needed kind of some fill-in, and that's all that I really was. And when Delane got appointed, place one is the actual liaison for this board. So I spoke with her and said, since you are actively on this board, you're in the best position to take that liaison position and then interview possible replacements for your chair position and then the one position that is being vacated. So I am effectively turning it back over to Delane.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a removal of a board member because of absences, which is Travis Linder, who maybe at some point he'll have more time on his calendar to come back because he is a business owner. And that's one of the things that this board would like to have, participation from the business owners. So I have two people to nominate, and then I won't leave an opening, and Travis will leave an opening. And we had four applicants, and two of them stood out as having different but valuable input. So I'd like to nominate Dr. William Rector, and then also Jimmy Mullins, who made application, gosh, a little more than, a little less than a year ago, I think. But anyway, I've spoken with both of them, and they are ready to go to work and look like they have the time on their hands to, I think we may need to work out some details with HDBA. So I'm just learning as I go. I have some great ideas. We, hopefully, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, a board meeting, and we hope to nominate a chair, an official chair of that board tomorrow.
And you'd remain as a liaison?
I would remain as liaison, yes.
And so is that a motion, Delane?
I suppose it is.
Okay, then I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Dr. William Rector and Jimmy Mullins to the Main Street Advisory Board.
And remove, and remove Travis.
As part of the motion.
Yes.
Much after it, but.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. We have eight B, appointments to the Recovery Community Coalition. Ms. McLohen?
Oh, we do have two vacancies, and we do have two applicants.
We do have two.
Good. And the interview team was Mr. McKinney, I believe, and.
One, and I think going to get hold the other.
Yeah, I'd actually finally talked to him at council here at about 5:30, I mean, 3:30, sorry. So I would recommend Tony Morales in a heartbeat. I didn't know there was two openings, so your gentleman, Brian?
Right.
You want to make a motion to?
I would, I would move for Brian's, I guess.
I would move for Tony, Tony Morales.
Making one motion together.
One motion, okay. You make the motion, I'll second it. Brian Brennan and.
I'd like to make, I don't know Brian's last name again.
Brennan, B-R-A-N-N-A-N.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tony Morales and Brian Brennan?
Brennan.
To the Recovery Coalition Board, to fill the vacancies.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. All right, there's no need to go into executive session, as far as I can tell, or whatever. I never close this, I was like, oh, I lost. I can close this meeting and close that meeting at the same time?
I'm sorry. Never close a workshop.
I'm happy to close.
Yes, yes, did, just, no, no, just however you want to do it.
All right.
I'm proud.
Both out.
Does anybody have an item for future agendas? We're gonna go ahead and close the city council meeting at 7:07, slightly better than last time. And also, we're gonna close the executive session that I neglected to close with nothing to report. That was the workshop executive session. Everyone.
We will, Joe.